Welcome to this regular school committee meeting of Thursday, December 20th, 2018. You'll notice that there's only the school committee here. That's because we're going immediately into executive session. Afterwards, we will return and start our meeting in the normal manner. We will go to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and/or non-union personnel or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union in which have held in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect. To conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation in which if held in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect, collective bargaining may also be conducted. And we'll be discussing the superintendent Bodie's contract. So can I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
So move.
Second?
Second. So that's...
Aye.
Yes.
I'm not even minutes.
I am.
Oh, you are, okay. Aye.
Okay, Dr. Seuss?
Yes.
Okay, and I say yes, and so we're in executive session. Thank you.
You want to chime?
Oh, yeah, I would.
Welcome back to the regular school committee meeting of Thursday, December 20th, 2018. We're returning from executive session and may have a motion.
Yes, I move to authorize the chair to notify the superintendent in writing that we wish to continue her employment beyond June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion to the motion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, that's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. So at this point, we begin where meetings usually begin. Do we have any public participation?
There was no one.
There was none, okay. So now we move on to the elementary FY20 budget needs request presentation. Can I have you folks share the mics up front?
Yeah. We're outnumbered. This is...
Yeah. There's a lot of them. Do they need the screen?
I don't think they need the screen, no. They have...
Is it what she's...
We're close.
We're going to introduce everyone?
Well, I'll let them all introduce. Steph. Okay.
Did you just get dismissed?
Well...
Sure.
I will let them introduce themselves, but I want to welcome all of our esteemed elementary principals. It's an incredibly great collaborative team that work together for the benefit of all of our elementary students, actually the whole district. It's quite...they're quite remarkable, so...but they can introduce themselves to our school.
Good evening, thanks for asking us. I'm Stephanie Zurgikoff, I'm principal of the Bracket Elementary School.
Karen Hartley, principal of the Pierce Elementary School.
Good evening, Mark McIneney, principal at the Bishop.
Hey, parents, Hardy Elementary. Karen DeNato, principal at Thompson.
Michael Hanna, principal of Stratton School.
Everyone, Thad Dingman, principal of Dallin Elementary.
In behind, we have a number of our curriculum leaders here. Larry Weathers, director of science. Dave Ardito, visual arts. Deb Perry, English. And Bill Papazisas, performing arts.
Great, thank you very much for coming.
Good evening, school committee, chair, superintendent. We want to thank you again for having this opportunity to come forward to talk about our schools and the work that we have been doing this year. As we stated last year, we continue to be grateful for your support of our work as well as the opportunity to provide the leadership in a district that values a high-quality educational experience for our children. From all that we've experienced in Arlington, this fact is unwavering. As we expressed last year in Arlington, our experience is both similar to and distinct from national trends in education. The popularity of our town has brought a wave of enrollment that is changing the population and dynamics of our schools and are also our square footage needed for the optimal learning for all of our students. Standards and assessments are changing to reflect the needs for our students to develop 21st century skills, and our teachers are needing to be more nimble than ever as the demands of the profession shift rapidly. The mental health crisis and the effects of trauma, the need for optimal inclusion of all races in the multiple ethnic, language, religious traditions. In our schools, the fluidity of social identity are real challenges that our school are being challenged to confront. Technology advancements are offering us an unprecedented opportunity to rethink how schools and families educate parents, students, but not without unintended and sometimes unhealthy social-emotional side effects as young children interact more and more behind the screen. Parents are both more invested and more interested in the child's educational experience but can also be worried because the world feels unsafe. They rely on teachers, educators, and leadership more. We'd like to open this year with a short expression of appreciation for the particular funding initiatives from last year and a brief description of their individual impacts of the programming for the Arlington Elementary School students.
Last year, I was fortunate to have an additional social worker approved at Thompson School, and the impacts to the work that we do with our students has been significant. We're able to have our social workers, now that I have two, be in more classrooms, be able to deliver a social-emotional curriculum, be able to spend more time having additional students who need lunch groups, who need pragmatic, social pragmatic skills. And in addition, it allows us to be more responsive and thorough when we have students in crisis. So that's been a huge addition at Thompson School, and I am very appreciative of that. An additional literacy coach last year, we also was introduced for this year, moving the team of teachers responsible for overseeing ELA teaching and learning advancements from three to four. I can just speak briefly about the impact it has at Thompson. I've been able to have regular meetings with the literacy coach, be able to meet with her and other members of the team, and to be able to discuss curriculum, data, take a look at data in a more precise way so that we can target even more of our interventions in a more meaningful way. And just in particular, we're starting some significant work in kindergarten this year, which I think is really going to have an impact for us.
Yeah, just to add to that, the literacy coaches are, in case anyone's listening who doesn't know what that might mean, it's someone who's really at the hip of the practitioner and giving feedback in real time while they're in the classroom with children. They develop a really special relationship because that kind of coaching in real time doesn't...hasn't historically happened in schools. So to have these people who are connecting and making the quality of literacy instruction so much deeper, and having more and more of them means that you have deeper and deeper relationships, more and more impact. I can just very quickly think of, for each one of them, we have a new kindergarten teacher at Stratton School, Linda Hansen. I was in that classroom today. She was right with that kindergarten teacher, helping her to roll out the curriculum. In third grade, Maria Amato has been filming herself and the teacher together to create snapshots of preferred practice that they can share out to everybody. Ally Mega Hayes, if you want to go down to Not Your Average Joes, one of the writing celebrations included some public display of written work. It's because there's so many more of them, and I know that one or two doesn't seem like a lot, they're able to do so much more. And Ally's public exhibition that she coached the first grade faculty to is because she had the bandwidth to do that. And finally, Shannon O'Brien is working with, now we have one new fifth grade and two new fourth grade teachers at Stratton, and that she is...and that the students don't know that Shannon is not officially on faculty at Stratton School is a testament to the fact that, again, those closer relationships with coaches, the more bandwidth they have, it's just...it's improved programming profoundly. Thank you.
We want to speak a little bit and thank you about granting us full-time kindergarten teaching assistance. I think, you know, just from a management of class size perspective, having a second adult in the classroom has been so helpful. For a lot of our children, this is their first experience in school, and I think to be able to have a second adult just to make sure that they're learning routines, that they're exiting and entering the building safely, has just...we've seen such a difference, especially at dismissal time. You know, the first time for a lot of these kids, being...having to take on and off recess clothing. We try to get them outside as much as possible, as everybody knows, and the sheer management of that for someone that little, it is a terrific responsibility. And we've all seen, I think, the better experiences with that end, and that, you know, and socially, emotionally, being able to have another person to go to in a moment of crisis that may not be caught otherwise, I think, has just made the kindergarten room just an even more joyous place. And I think I can speak a little bit more to the academic aspects that the teachers have shared.
Absolutely. So we spent a little time talking to kindergarten teachers and the TAs as well to try to bring their voice to the conversation about what it is that has changed in their practice with having this extra support. And I think loud and clear, there are simple things that you would expect, like Karen's talking about. I mean, yes, it's very helpful if someone needs to go to the bathroom, or if we have these other details that are hard for five- and six-year-olds to manage on their own that we can do that, but also that academic piece and the social-emotional piece is so strong. In our kindergartens, we have a program called Tools of the Mind, which I'm sure you're familiar with, and been spending a lot of time in the kindergarten and listening to the teachers talk about the impact that that program has. And in order for it to really meet the needs of our youngest learners, you truly have to have another person there to help to keep those groups small. And they're learning everything from science to social studies and addition...and, you know, all of their reading and math comes along together with this program that is very much play-based and developmentally appropriate for their age, but when you see them in those small groups and you hear them talking about what they're learning, it really is an amazing thing to see and hear. So it brings that small group instruction into a place where it's actually possible to do that. It gives individual supports to all students, the ones who are struggling, but also thinking about the ways we can enrich and extend the learning for our youngest students. And then I think the other important piece that the teachers and the TAs talk about is that in order to do all of this wonderful PD that we have planned, sometimes it's mentoring, sometimes it's other kind of professional development opportunities, our classroom teachers in kindergarten are out, and then the youngest learners don't have to have somebody unfamiliar to them. They have a consistent presence that keeps their day moving along in a way that is productive and happy. So I think that what we've noticed and what I hear from our classrooms is that everyone is...and the parents also are very appreciative of that extra time for their kids.
We all know that the work of schools is exciting and terrifically complex. We've entered a moment in time where education has made its way from the back page to the front page, and it's more important than ever that we be transparent and honest about our strengths as schools and our opportunities for growth. This year, the elementary principal team continues to approach our budget requests with a multiple-year view. Rather than look at fiscal year '20 in isolation, we once again considered the district priorities, requests from our faculty, our leadership emphases, funding commitments from last year, and the resources that we have and need to support students and teachers in demonstrating success and high achievement. We emphasize a vision for how our elementary schools can and should be resourced so that we can say we are leading safe and supportive schools for all students. Schools where high-quality teaching and professional learning are a priority, schools where each child has the opportunity to achieve at a high level, and all families in our town are benefiting from the investment in our schools. So we've included a table that shows our...outlines our recommendations that each of our schools would use as a guide for budgetary requests next year and continuing over the next two to three years, moving towards an equitable allocation of people and resources in cooperation of the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, our curriculum directors, the directors of special education, and revised as needed with changes in demographics that are currently unfolding across Arlington. So this is our second year in anchoring our requests in what you can see in the left-hand column. So we've also recognized the FTEs that have already been funded in fiscal year '19. The table that you can see was not a part of the presentation that we gave last year, so hopefully the...it's clear, requests that were made, requests that were funded, and continuing on for requests for fiscal year '20 that were anticipated.
So the staffing model we're presenting considers the day-to-day experience of our students and teachers, also the district priorities that we are all supporting as an administrative team. And high on this...highest on these lists is developing culturally responsive schools and educators, implementing school-wide and school-day social-emotional learning, having an aligned, high-quality instruction that supports significant and ongoing curriculum reform and improvement, increasing access to personalized learning opportunities, and iterative improvements to parent engagement and communication. And I'd also like to add, just off the text, that these are, of course, sort of a distillation of all of the, sort of, the highest priorities as we've seen it, but of course, there are more priorities that are articulated in the five-year plan that we also support and most notably connected to the different departments from whom the curriculum directors are representing. So we can now take moments to continue the conversation, answer any questions, speak about the experiences in our schools that may underscore the importance of each staffing request.
I would just like to thank the elementary principals for their presentation, and I just want to add one update with the number of FTEs in the table. We've had an update, you know, as we continue to look at the needs. I would like to update that 5.1 FTE to 5.94. 5.94. So if you can make that correction on the table, that'd be great.
Dr. Seuss?
I just actually just don't understand the chart. Yeah, so I don't understand where the numbers come from. So, for example, the building-based ELA coaches, so three FTEs on the increase, but then you're looking for one in FY19 and zero in FY20, so I'm not...there's a whole bunch of that. I just...I'm not sure where...
Four in FY19.
What?
So FY19 is what we did.
Oh, yeah, that's what we did, right?
But where's the other two?
But where's the other two? Like, there's a...that's a whole bunch of...I just don't really...or is there...should be...there be more columns that we're missing?
Yeah, I think if you're taking a view of five-year, yes, there should be more columns. We tried to just be anchoring it just to the next fiscal year in this document, but we would imagine that going forward, there would be other years where we would be petitioning for...
Okay, so the first column is what you...where you want to be in five years. The second column, yeah, sorry, I misread this, is where we've gone so far, and the third column is where we want to go in next year. And then whatever's happening in the next four years, we don't have that down. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, can I just clarify, is that what it is? So the first column is the goal?
Five-year goal.
So what's...
No, not five...your five-year goal, that first column?
Is that right?
Or is that next year's goal?
No.
No, no.
But it's not the same as the five-year goal on the plan that was presented in F...for FY19, because the numbers don't...aren't the same.
Okay, and then the other question is, so there's nothing here that tells us what the current state is?
Right.
I mean, it says what we got last year, but it doesn't say how many there are now total, so...
Like, increase three to get to seven, or something like, you know, that kind of sort of information?
Right. That's fair. Yeah, I think that the...yeah, for example, the third row is building-based ELA coaches. We wanted to boost by three. We didn't account for the fact that there was, you know, already four, and that we funded an additional, or three, rather, and now that there's four plus that...because of that, plus one in FY19, there's four now? Yeah, that's true. Yeah, we could do more clear about that.
Can I just...just while we're talking about the columns and the numbers, so for the FY19 ask, like, the chart that came this time last year, it looked like it was an ask for, like, four ELA coaches, right? So then we did one, right? So now we only need three, right? Right? So, but I guess what's confusing is, to me, I read this chart, and I feel like the overall ask is for three, but we've done one, so now you only need two, but you really still need three.
Right. Is that true?
Is that true, or no?
Yes.
I think they're changing their goal. Or are you changing the ask from what came last year, which is also fine?
So go through that one more time, the ask.
So I'm looking...I pulled the FY19 budget...
Right.
...street that we saw this time last year, and the ask at that benchmark...
For ELA coaches.
For ELA coaches was 4.0.
That's four.
Four, right? We did one for FY19, which means we would have three to go.
Right.
But what's tricky, I guess, is when I look at now the FY20 ask, it looks like the ask is for three total, and we've funded one, which means...and we're not funding any...we're...like, I don't know.
So if you look under the FY20 request, actually, the request is...
None.
None.
Right, agreed.
In prioritizing that request over five years, the requests under fiscal year '20 are the prioritize asks?
Yep.
In the left-hand column, there is still that three FTEs represented to meet that complete goal of seven building-based ELA coaches.
Okay, and that...you did that consistently in the left-hand...so like, the 2.5 FTEs assistant principals, you want...
2.5.
You have two and a half that you still need, even though we've already done one. And you want, of those two and a half you still need, you want two of them in FY20.
So who was on first second?
Not me.
Mr. Hayter.
No, I get it. It makes sense. I get it.
There are some phenomenal minds on this committee. There are some minds on this committee that never had a math coach and still has trouble with second-grade math. Through the chair, I would ask that we get a chart that says what we got and what you want.
Yeah.
And what the long-term goal is.
And it was great to have that.
But you can have that. I just want what we got and what you want for this year.
Got it.
I think what was interesting about going through this process and not being here last year at this point is that the elementary team was looking at it in stages, but now actually, when you look at that five-year plan, it's really starting now. So it's almost like we have to start again. But so, it does make sense, I think, that we should remake the chart.
My request is probably going to change from year to year, but we can get a picture of what we got, where we are today, and what we're looking...trying to get for next September. Thank you.
Mr. Schutman?
Yeah, we have a long-range planning document as well, where we've structured it out in that way. And, you know, one of the frustrating things for me is, I work in a different school system, and these schools are configured differently and have different needs, and sometimes I get confused. I get Lowell schools in my head instead of Arlington, so I don't immediately remember or recognize what the status quo is in an Arlington building. So that if we were to take all the presentations, last week's and this week's, and put that in the same format as the long-range planning, so we can see, because we started to fund it for this year, we've made an effort, so if we can see the baseline before fiscal 19, fiscal 19, you're asked for 20 and your five-year goal. So, and that is a format that we basically have, that we were sitting around this table with the other day, excuse me. But if we can get it all in one format where every school and every need, central office need is formatted the same, it certainly going to help us in terms of looking at the priorities as well.
Okay, Mr. Fieldman?
After you, I think we're going to hear from the AA representative about elementary and monomy budget requests, right? So I just...but I just want to...so I'm not trying to...there are lots of great ideas, and the school committee will sift through them and pick which ones, but AA is saying there should be three learning specialists at each elementary school, K1, 2, 3, 4, 5. What do we have right now for learning specialists? What's...
Learning specialists?
Yeah, like, so, yeah, not every school has three, is that?
Correct.
Okay. School of two social workers per building, every building right now has one?
Except for Thompson.
Thompson doesn't have...
Thompson has two.
Thompson has two.
Mm-hmm.
Thompson has two, not a break. Okay, Thompson has two, okay, then I see FTE. Then there is something in here which we have never really talked about, and I'm just wondering, I would just kind of get...I want to get a sense of what, you know, what, if there's a conversation taking place, it says in the AA thing, and I'm going to put it in the spot. "Our high...gifted and talented program for each elementary school rationale, our high-level learners deserve a time for specialized instruction differentiation is not enough to allow them to thrive. Teachers report this as an area of need." Has there been kind of a conversation among you guys and the teachers about this? Is this like...I'm just kind of curious about this topic.
It's one of the AA...that's in the AA.
Yeah, 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 so I'm going to ask them, but I just want to know while you're up on the stage here, has this been...I mean, has this been...is there conversations going on?
They've not talked about that amongst my staff. I can speak for myself.
Okay, I'm not...I don't know if it's right or wrong. I just want to know if there's been...if this is like a thing...
It's definitely something, I think, that comes up.
It comes up.
It's not...we haven't had, I don't think I have...I know I haven't had a formal discussion with my entire staff around it, but there's definitely staff...
Okay. I'm going to ask the reference. I just wanted to know if this is something that you guys have...okay, all right, that's all. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Seuss?
So 2.4 of these are sped-related, and I wanted to ask Ms. Elmer, is that enrollment growth-related, or is that we have a deficit, or new needs, or sort of what your opinion is about these requests?
So we have been in the past trying to give our learning specialists at the elementary schools up to three. Last year, we have made requests, the previous two years, we haven't been able to with the priorities, so the request at Stratton reflects previous requests. And then the OTs is enrollment caseload, just a, you know, to cover minutes on the grid.
All right, and then there's one more, SLC.
The SLC, that's...so that, sorry, the 0.5 FTE at Bracket would be for, they...last year, they were able to get a 0.5 social worker for the SLC program. This would be to make that a full-time position, which would bring them up to what the other sub-separate programs at the elementary level have.
Okay.
The 6.0 is a larger five-year plan, but...
Okay.
Any...Ms. Morgan?
I have so many. So I...per Jeff's comment, because he was, like, because we get the AA asks, and we...you guys are up, and then they're up next, and so it's always kind of interesting to be like, oh, like, how do they fit together? And like, in lots of places, you're like, oh, look, you can just draw like a little connecting line, and all the like, decimals line up, and it looks really great, and you're like, oh, okay, great. So the one thing that they don't have on their asks are the assistant principals, which is kind of interesting, right? It's like, I know we're not like in the full prioritization mode right now, but like, alphabetically, it could fit at the top of your chart, but I mean, it's right there. So I guess I'd like to hear a little bit more, I guess, you know, for what's been a little bit tricky, and we've talked about this a little bit at budget, is it's hard to like, it's hard to make these assistant principals really tangible, because what we don't seem to get, we don't get a lot of data, right? Like, are you seeing X number more kids? Are you doing, you know, X, Y, and Z? Because ultimately, you know, we're packaging up all of these asks, and we're trying to like, to sell them to people who are very like focused on decimal points and like, you know, like active data, and it's really hard to collect that about, like, the, you know, how useful these assistant principals are, but, you know, some kind of like, like, I don't want to put you two on the spot, but I think, you know, some kind of narrative, like, how is this like really useful? It's a big ask, right? I mean, it's lots of dollars. So I think it would be helpful for us to understand how they're being used in the buildings where we have them. I have no doubt they're being used well, but it would be nice to hear that, I guess. And for all of our viewers, hundreds of...
Do you want to start?
Well, I guess I'll start by saying I can only speak for Dallin...
Of course.
Both in the context of assistant principals and in working with RAA building reps about, you know, what they feel is important. And I think it's probably not a surprise that the things that pop to the top are managing and maintaining a really reasonable class size, so having teachers and enough teachers and enough support in the classroom to do the job that they need to do, deliver high-quality curriculum. I think those rise to the top, and how can you not respect, you know, those asks? Those should be on the forefront of our teachers' minds, doing the best job they can in the classroom. And those have been the conversations that I've had with our building reps in talking with our teachers about, you know, what do you want and what do you need? We also are benefiting from having an assistant principal. We've...this is our second year of having our assistant principal. I'm going to use her name because she's... I'm going to use her name because she's wonderful, Samantha Karustas. She's been really important for our school. What, what I see the value, or where I see her value, I don't mean for this analogy to be crude, and I don't think it is, but that multipurpose tool is where Sam has come in and provided lots of different types of support. She first and foremost has helped give teachers the face time that they deserve, both for supervision and evaluation, but also for managing day-to-day decisions in their classroom and work with their kids. And that was an area where, and I don't think I'm alone, there's a point of feeling stretched incredibly thin when you're trying to be there for the 490 students and 70 staff members that you have in your building. And I know there's 70 because we gave them all whoopee pies today, and we needed 70 whoopee pies. There's, so in that, and I'm mentioning a real, a high emphasis on student support. And so, we've put a lot of that on our social workers, but there's days where Ms. Karustas is a social worker as much as she is in that administrative role. She gives support and guidance and direction to our teaching assistants and our other support staff, which are a whole nother group of really important people in our schools who haven't benefited from that type of, that type of leadership, just because of the shape of the schedule and the time in a day. And Ms. Karustas has come in and offered them professional development and been a voice for that team. I think in creating, really important, the climate and culture in our school to make sure it's a place where teachers experience, or can think about their own wellness, there is countless times in a day where someone just comes up and says, can I talk to you about, I want to ask you about, I made this decision, what do you think of? And having somebody to help give teachers that type of, just an ear and some guidance is incredibly good for people feeling like they're supported in a school. And so that's sort of separate than just supervision and evaluation. Sometimes it's triage, you know, there can be days where you have 490 students, for some reason, everybody decides that it's not the best moment on a Tuesday, and you have to be everywhere. And having Ms. Karustas there both to direct and manage has been invaluable. It makes people feel like they're listened to, and it keeps our, our school moving forward. There's day-to-day decision-making that needs to happen. And if you think about the range of things that we do in a day, on top of just instruction in kids, managing the building, our front office, you know, are all really important parts of the job that have benefited from having her there. And then it is, you know, this is a selfish plug, but having a job-alike colleague, you know, it's very rare to be in a, in a position where you are the only one in your role. So how, it can be maddening. It can be really hard, and having a job-alike colleague to give yourself that check and balance, to make sure you're doing the best job for your school, your teachers, and your kids, and your families, has been really wonderful. So, I think our, I think our teachers would say that it's been incredible value-added, but it is in the service of what they're doing in their classrooms. And, you know, I do respect their, how our teachers see their jobs. Even if it's, even if that isn't top of the list, I think it's in support of them.
Can I just add something, even though I don't have an assistant principal, but as a parent of a student who is lucky enough to be able to access the assistant principal, he has a weekly time with a group of boys that she meets with, and it has been the highlight of his weeks where he's, if he's struggling on the playground, or we're trying to, as the teacher said at our parent-teacher conference, we want to channel his energy for good. Yes, we do, I'm so sorry, yes, we do.
We've all heard that.
But this is, but this is one of the ways that she, in this role, is able to spend time and get to know, even if it's a smaller handful of students more personally, it's having an impact on him and the rest of, hopefully, the rest of the class.
That's true. I'd love to add a few things about that, too, and I think Dad has spoken incredibly well about it, and would, so, ditto, all of those things. But also, just, I think it connects to some of the other big-picture things that we're trying to do, that we're trying to put in place as far as what an elementary program looks like and what we need to fund it in order for it to be successful. And it, and it connects a little bit to what you're saying about meeting the needs of all of the students, and thinking about, too, that piece about enriching some of the programming for our students, because we want to be the instructional leaders. And so, we're talking about creating structures that have multi-tiered systems of support. And so that requires an incredible amount of time and attention. And that, in order to do that effectively and well, and not, you know, have negative consequences for our students, in fact, to do things that are actually going to support them in their learning at the high end of that spectrum and all the ways in between, we need people on the ground who are building relationships with the students, with the educators, with the parent community. And all of that will come together to make that rich, healthy school culture. And it's a job that's become, you know, really, in some ways, unmanageable for one person. And in fact, I think that, you know, having that job-alike person is a piece of it, but also, we couldn't possibly be in all of the places that we need, I mean, I know we try, right? We try very hard, but at what cost?
Stephanie can, Stephanie can, for sure.
But when we don't have that support in schools that are rapidly approaching or have surpassed 500 students and all of the families, you know, we really aren't able to physically get to all of those needs. And there's also just a whole lot of management in a school building every day. And we need to find that balance, and sometimes it does need another person to help you do that.
That's helpful. Thank you. Can I ask my other question, or do you want to go back?
Why don't we go?
Okay.
I just want to ask one, one small question on the principals. So in the long-range plan, it wasn't clear whether eventually you're looking to actually have full-time principals at the largest schools, or really, you think half-time is all we can do right now, or what the request is? I don't know if that, if you can shed any light on that? Of what the request actually is, what the real request is? I mean, certainly, I think
We don't fantasy, we want, you know.
Certainly, at some of the smaller schools, it doesn't seem quite justified. But at some of the larger schools, are you, are you looking for the full-time, or, or not? Or are there other priorities that you think outrank that?
I, I think right now, and that's why it's hard, we want to do a five-year plan, but we also have to be thinking, I mean, we're just, things have changed so much from year to year that we'd hate to put a marker down for something. And, and you would quite rightly hold us to that, and, and things shift again, and, you know, some is good, more is great, you know, I, I think that, as you've heard, the role is so broad. And, and every year becomes more complex, and, so, we could use all the help we could get. And, so I think that's our thinking, but at the same time, we, you know, it's not about exclusively making our jobs easier. It's about the kids thriving and faculty thriving. So, we want to make sure that, that, you know, that's first. And insofar as our work can make that happen, and we can have support to make that happen, then that's what we'll want.
And I think that acknowledging that this is the first, we're still in the first stages of using this resource, I think that's a fair question to continue to come back to. And to be able to say, no, yeah, this has been a good resource for a school, and now let's take a look at some of these other line items that we think are important. Or, this has shown us what we can do and a potential of doing even better.
Great, thank you. And the, I jotted down everything you said, not everything you said, but most of what you said for the narrative that we're building for the, the five-year plan. It's very helpful to have that, that background.
Yeah, I, you know, this past five minutes resonates with me as a former building principal on an elementary level. The social worker was just sort of the heart and soul of the person I needed on a day-to-day basis more than anybody else. Anybody else calling sick, we can get through it. Social worker was gone, you know, it's like, it's going to be a tough day. And having this unification of the assistant principal and the social work position, I think really emphasizes what we want out of our administrators, and particularly assistant principals, to be focused on inquiring into the life of a child, and teaching, and, and, and making things better, rather than assistant principal and an old traditional model of being, sort of being punitive. So that the social work skills for somebody who's dealing with classroom issues of behavior is really an essential part, and the fact that we have somebody who's split between a social worker and assistant principal, I think is just a tremendous blessing. And, and I think that it's, it, it, it's a value-added thing. I know people are going to, who, who value each position are going to have problems with it because they value the uniqueness of each position. But I, I'm thrilled by, by the, by the possibilities, not budgetarily, but
Mr. Schlichtman?
Yeah.
Point of order.
We need a clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
The clarification is
There's one person.
I can speak to this, too. The assistant principal at Dallin, is that who you're talking about?
Yeah.
She is not
No, we have one position that is in that, that we were struggling with on that, weren't we?
Chair. She was figuratively a social worker, and that she acts in the capacity of problem-solving with students and whatnot. She is not a licensed social worker.
Okay, she, she's not, doesn't have a license, okay.
The broader point.
I withdraw, I withdraw the comment.
Paul, but, no, but to speak to, to that, one of the highlights of the week, when I feel like it's the most productive 45 minutes I spend each week, is with our assistant principal, our social worker, our school psychologist, our school nurse, and myself. And we talk about the academic life, the behavioral life, the physical life of the child and the family. And everybody leaves with having, like, these little case studies and a job to do in their specific roles, in consideration of both, like, this restorative practice that we want in our schools,
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
and the whole child experience.
I apologize, I was getting hung up with something I was dealing with in, in negotiations.
But you are making a very good point.
Yeah.
And the fact, I guess, two things that I'm thinking about as you're speaking is, one, is that the discipline that goes on in schools is not, like you might think, old-school. Like, the assistant principal does the discipline, it's very punitive, right? It's detention and all of those things.
Right.
But what we look at now is that when there are misbehaviors in school, it truly is something that we're looking at as an opportunity to help that child to learn and grow. And that takes a lot of time to meet those needs. And I think that we all, like Dad said, can put that social worker hat on from time to time to do that. But if we're talking about actually splitting the role, it's Peggy Satzulus at Hardy who actually does split the role. So she's point five team chair, and she's point five AP.
Okay, it was a team-chair AP role that we were dealing with, yeah.
Right. And I think that it's a really interesting thing to think about as far as what does point five actually mean within a school? Are we actually working towards, you know, a one point oh when we're talking about APs? And it, it's something that Peggy and I very explicitly this year have been looking at collecting some of that data that you're talking about to see, you know, what is she doing within this AP role? So that we do have that data to share about what will eventually help us to be able to support working towards that being a full-time person. So that is in process.
But, yeah, but budgetarily for us, and I, I would say as, as a building person, to have an assistant principal in my building half the time, and in some other building half the time, is going to, would, would drive me absolutely bonkers, because the time you need them, they weren't there. So that you'd really be looking for some way, if, if we have to have a point five assistant principal, is to tie that to another position.
Fred. Mr. Philman.
So I, I think this is a, this is a good discussion to have, and there's a lot for us to learn. I do think it would be good to get to a point, if it's possible, for a universal common definition of the assistant principal position. And we might get to a point where there is a one point oh assistant principal with defined duties at all seven elementary schools, or at least six, maybe all seven, I don't know, depending on size. Because I think from a, because Glenn is right, we're building a narrative for a multi-year plan and trying to get people to support it. And the high-level pitch to people is, at least for me, is, look, we now have elementary schools with 500 students in them, and it's, and it's, and it's not good for the safety and the health of our students, that there's only one person at the head of the school. There's always going to be one person at the school, but it's not, it's not good just to have a principal without an assistant principal. And second, there's just no way one good principal can get to all of the supervision and evaluation that needs to be done in that building with so many things going on without an assistant. And so, it seems like it would be really helpful to get to it, because there's a lot of different, I, there's a lot of different definitions that came up in this conversation. It would be good to have like one clear definition. Well, it's understanding that inside the school, there's always nuances and differences based on the character of the school. So that would really help with this, what we're trying to do. So Glenn might be back in touch with this, because he's doing a lot of the work for this, though we're taking credit for it.
Ms. Morgan, I think you would
Ooh, great. So, the, the specialists, the specialist ask is another big one. It keeps going up, because it used to be like four and a half, and then it was four point one, and now we're five point nine, five, was it five point nine something? Great, almost six, right? You can round. So I guess, I had a couple of questions related to that, and I talked to Rod about it, because I was like, what are these people going to do for the rest of the day? And no doubt that you can find very productive things for them to do during their, you know, other bits and pieces of their day, which is fine. And I, I liked to see that it was also in the AEA ask. That was, like, that was reassuring for me, because I was like, okay, this, like, this feels like we're marching to the same drum, even though it's just, it's a lot of people, right? Like, six FTEs is, is a lot. So, and I understand the scheduling piece seems to make a lot of sense. I think, you know, what's, what's hard for me in thinking about it is, I can think about, like, implementing, even if we couldn't get the two and a half, or how many do we need next year, the two point oh assistant principals, maybe we could do one, and like, that's doable, because you can roll out two more schools. Is, is my, my sense is, though, with this six FTEs for specialists, do we kind of have to go after the whole six all in one go? Or can we, like, because these are, like, we're dealing with people who we already have and want to retain, right? So, do we have to kind of go for the whole thing in one go, or can we pull it apart? Well, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's tricky, right? Because it's like, some of these other pieces, you can be like, okay, well, we could do that part, and then we could keep shoving that down the road. I mean, if it was all my money, I would do all of the things, right? But I mean, but this six FTEs for this kind of a new model of specialists feels like we think we have to fight the whole thing in one go.
Sure, in a nutshell, without, you know, over-articulating this, we would need this full ask to make what we want happen. And that is more time with teachers that we have control over, looking at student data, working together, observing each other, best practice on a weekly cycle that's consistent, that's a format that works with everyone, where we, administrators don't always need to be present, but a format that can drive itself. Right now, we just don't have that. We don't have enough time with teachers that we control. And so, yes, to your question.
Dr. Bodie, Dr. McNeil.
I'll, I'll add a couple comments. I'm going to let Dr. McNeil talk about this, because he's been very much working on it. We spend a lot of time on this. The, the idea, one of the things that's happened in the last few years is context, is that it is increasingly very challenging, in fact, almost impossible to do the scheduling of specialists in the elementary schools, because we do a lot of sharing. And it, it, it just, what, what ends up happening, you occasionally get in a school the ability to have all the teachers in a grade have the same time off for prep time. But that is really becoming more rare. And, so, what, by doing this, we would be able to accomplish that, but also be able to have the ability to have, once a week, have all of the grade-level teachers meet with the principal, or coach, or whatever, what, that is decided for that job, for that grade. But what would end up happening on a quarter basis is that students might get an extra art class or an extra music class. And in fact, our directors of art and music, visual arts and performing arts are here as well to talk about how this would be utilized. There are lots of things that we know that we need more time for, technology. As we have more students taking MCAS, we really do need to introduce keyboarding at a much earlier age. So there are, there is no concern on our part, as we've actually dug into the weeds on this, that these people would not be well-utilized in a school. And what it would mean is that that person is a part of that school. So, other than with physical education, teachers would be the music teacher at that school. There might be a little bit of sharing that would have to go on There might be a little bit of sharing that would have to go on because our, our schools, as you know, are very different in sizes. There's a span of almost two hundred students, really, from one school to the most populous. But, you know, having also that ability to have another teacher in the building to support other, perhaps enrichment, we've talked a little bit about that for the AEA, enrichment for students, because we have very talented teachers that are specialists. And I, I would invite the principals to talk about this because they, they have spent a lot of time on this as well, in both in terms of the nitty-gritty of how it would schedule and also just the big picture of what it would accomplish in their school. And Dr. McNeil, you want to say something?
Can I add just one thing?
Sure, absolutely.
And which is that Dr. Bodie had mentioned that it's rare to find those times when a grade level can be released. It's also the case that it's almost never, along with the special educators, who are part of that teaching team, that grade-level team. And finally, even when they are together, they aren't necess, they aren't charged by us during that time. That's their prep time. So it may be in common, but we, you know, hope that they can get together and do some design work together, but that's their only time during the day to do everything else as well. And they have heroically, you know, squeezed in, meeting with coaches during those common times and that kind of thing, but they, they're not, you know, charged to do so.
And I would just add to everything that's been said, that, you know, as a specialist teacher, and you're shared between buildings, and it's often, often comes up, is the specialist teacher during, like, early release schedule, when they have a building meeting, they're asking, what building do I go to? So I feel like the, we have discussed also having that specialist feel a part of the school community and knowing the students and having relationships with the other teachers in the building so they become part of the community. And the enrichment activities and the possibilities would also help support a multi-tiered support program that could, that teachers could, you know, provide extra time for supports, for teach, to provide intervention for particular groups of students. So there's, you know, vastly a number of ways that we could utilize those specialists. And so as you talk about the extra time, we really would have to sit down and I would have to go through the schedule with you, based upon the number of sections in each one of the schools, that each one of the schools, they have at each one of the schools. So I could walk you through how that time could be utilized and how much extra time, you know, that would, you know, how much extra time they would actually have. So I, I don't really foresee, after we've had some of these discussions, as the specialist having that much extra time.
And I just want to add one final thing, and it's rather selfish, but the reason, you know, there were special ed requests, but I fully endorse the bulk of the requests going towards the specialist schedule because to create a foundational schedule in which you can have all of the fourth grade having math at the same time, because currently someone has to drop off to go to their specials. If you're a special educator and interventionist or anyone else, you can never target one grade level. So not only is there planning time and time to meet, but to actually be able to plan a schedule where fourth grade at this school has math at the same time. If we can, you know, think about class assignment, we can think about teacher assignment, we can align our resources with the curriculum directors around interventionists in math going in while special educators in math are going in and concentrating. And that hasn't really been possible because the schedules don't align across the, the day. And to me, when we think about tiered interventions and think about eighty to eighty-five percent, if we're going to put our resources to target the most at that level, the schedule is so foundational to that. We haven't achieved a lot of the things that we want to achieve because of the schedule, frankly.
So it's a, so it's a way of looking at trying to address some of the issues, but we have to look at the schedule and get creative. And this is our ability to become creative and utilize these resources in order to do so. And so, you know, that's why I really endorse the request for the full-time specialists. And, and again, we, we're looking at this from a team approach, so it's not just, and coming upon the, the elementary principals to provide that instructional leadership, but we're also looking at curriculum directors, when, when teachers who have a common prep time, they could get together with the literacy coach or the math coach and have a six-week coaching cycle, where if we introduced a lot of, you know, new curriculum and new resources, that we have had to only utilize the, you know, early release schedule in order to provide that professional development. So having this time, we can utilize it to also add additional professional development and looking at lessons in real time. So teaching a lesson and then meeting to go to, together to see how that lesson went and then make the necessary adjustments. So there's so many different types of ways that we can utilize this type of schedule, but the only thing that we need is the full-time specialists in order to make it work. And if you ask, do we need it all in, at one time? Yes, so that there will be consistency across the district, so that all teachers, all fourth grade teachers would have the opportunity to have a common prep time on a daily basis and then a team time once a week to meet with principals. So when you talk about equity, I would definitely endorse that we, you know, this would be one of those package deals so that we can have that consistency and equity across the district.
Mr. Curden.
Thanks. So certainly, it sounds like it's a wonderful thing, but I think that we're, we're still a little confused about the details and why it amounts to six FTEs. So I guess the question for the committee is, you know, do we want to look at that at a budget subcommittee meeting or is there interest enough to do it here at the committee at a January, one of our January meetings?
And we do have, like, a draft schedule, what it would look like, as well as the calculation of the FTEs in comparison of what we have now. And then at each school, we've added on what we would need based upon.
We haven't seen that, so that's why.
No, I know, I'm saying, I'm saying we have that documentation.
That's where a lot of the questioning is, is coming from.
Sure, sure.
So, I mean, certainly, you know, when you're, when you're splitting a music teacher between two schools, you know, it's, it's inefficient, they can't be, you know, you can't do the schedule nicely, but you're also gaining, when you move to one person, you're, you're gaining the travel time that you no longer have.
Absolutely.
So how it nets out, would, you know, definitely we need to see that. And I guess the question is, do we want to do it at budget or do you want to do it here at the committee?
I, I think it's better at budget.
Budget, I believe.
Because there's, it's easier to do the back and forth than things, so.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Hayner.
I have no preference. We're discussed, but one of the things I'd like to see, I would like to preface that since we've done this, a lot more mandates have come up from the state, a lot more work. I don't mean this negative towards you, but one of the biggest selling features of the half-day release was to have common planning time. And I realize there's more and more stuff. So one of the things I'd like to see, if possible, is how common planning time is used on a regular basis. From what I'm hearing, I think more PD is being done at that and less common planning time. I don't know. So what, what I'm asking you for is how the early release days are being used on a regular basis at the elementary level.
Well, I, I think what we're looking for is, like, more consistency. So.
Right.
We have common planning, hold on, let me, let me finish. So we have common planning time, it's baked into the early release schedule. So you have, some of that time is building meeting time, where the principals meet with their staff, some of that time is data time, and then once a month, the curriculum directors meet with grade-level teams in order to have professional development. And I think that after, as you look at the time and compare it to having a common, a common prep time every, every day, so you're comparing something that would happen every day to something right now where we can guarantee common planning time once a week, but we can't guarantee it on a daily basis. And so that's where you see the difference.
You're looking for common planning time on a daily basis per grade?
We're talking about common prep time. So when teachers have.
Right.
The grade-level team would have, let's say, third period off every Tuesday and, and so common prep time on a daily basis.
Right. I'm not trying to split on definition of preparation or planning time, that, that's contractual, whatever. Just to be clear for me, you're looking for a common time per grade per day?
Yes, that is correct. And a once, and a once-a-week team time where that grade-level team meets with the principal, curriculum director, coach.
That would be management, that's not for us to be involved in. We, our job is to get you the, the time. So I just want to emphasize, so Monday through Friday, I'm a fourth-grade teacher, the other fourth, the other fourth-grade teachers and I would all have that same block of time per day, five days a week.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And I want to add, I don't want, I don't want this to fall off, but also, you would also have a once-a-week team time where you would meet with the building principal.
Plus?
In addition, in addition.
So you're looking at six?
Yes.
Right. So you have to remember that common planning time is teacher-directed. Administrators cannot dictate what teachers do during common planning time.
That's, that's contract. I understand that. We all also have X amount of hours on Tuesdays as well at the elementary level, am I correct?
Right now, you have thirty blocks of time where teachers have common planning time because of the early release Tuesday.
Three, three times a month, roughly.
That, that, again.
I'm saying, I'm saying it equates, it equates to thirty times for the year.
I think we're going to be getting more information at budget, and I think we should wait until we have that with the schedules and stuff.
Okay, I have a quick question and then a second quick question, cause comment. One is, I know that in the past, the instrumental music program has been very disruptive and tricky to manage around. Does this help with that at all or is that just totally a separate issue?
Please advocate, Bill.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Come up to the mic, please.
Oh, oh, yeah, you need to, we can't hear you. The, the viewers at home can't hear you.
Hi, Bill Papazis, Director Performing Arts. Uh, yes, potentially the, the new schedule will alleviate some of those, some of those concerns with the, with the pullout.
Okay. And then, so my comment is, I think that the opportunity for colleagues to meet with each other is one of the most valuable things. I also think another thing that's really important, which is not reflected here, interestingly, is the opportunity to observe, you know, peers and, you know. And so one of the things we've seen in the past is request for more building subs to let that happen, and that's not here. And I was just curious why sort of that's, that lacuna is there.
Right, I think, I, I have tried every which way to get as much peer observation and feedback as possible. I know all my friends have. And, and I think that what this will afford us is, is the part that's almost as important, which is the post-visit conversation, reflection, and sort of intention-setting for practice after the fact or before the fact. Our mentor programs anchored to that. Our coaching cycles are anchored to that, that you anticipate the lesson, you view the lesson, and you reflect on the lesson. So these meeting times will afford that.
Okay.
There will still be some logistics in actually getting bodies, you know, in, but to Allison's point of having a common instructional time, you know, one can conceive of different instructional times during the week, say, where it's more manageable and easy to imagine a couple of subs handling three classrooms if we're doing the same science work across three classrooms. It's just, the design of the, of the visit time is way more imaginable if the instructional times are common across the grade level.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Curden.
One of the things that was in the five-year plan that doesn't show up on your presentation tonight is the digital learning specialists. So I didn't know if maybe that got pushed up because of this other priority or, I don't think that was in your original plan last year, maybe it's a new idea, but could you talk about where that request came from and whether, how that falls into the sort of vision of what the school staffing should look like?
I can, I can. I think it's what, Glenn, it's just, it's sort of what you just said, that it's the reality that education for our students is going and continues to, and already really looks different. We're investing, we have invested quite a bit in hardware. We've put emphasis on new curriculum and an idea that we're going to continue to try to personalize the learning experience and that the classroom teacher can't do it all. So we have, I'm not sure what the exact title is of our, our librarians in our building, but our current, the current role doesn't include necessarily somebody that has that type of capacity or that type of experience. And I think it's pretty clear that that has to find its way into the elementary school. I mean, the kids are digital natives, their learning is slowly becoming more digital. Our curriculum actually is incorporating more online environments for students. It's a position that's been more popular in schools and school districts. Kathy mentioned we have to find room for basic skill-building in technology, just like emerging readers, right? They start somewhere. Um, our kids are going to need to start somewhere, too. So eventually, at some point over the next five years, it, the, I don't know if we can avoid having that type, that person with that type of expertise on a building staff.
And I just want to add that there's a whole Massachusetts Digital Literacy and Computer Science standards. So we are developing a curriculum for digital, to teach digital citizenship to our students. And these digital learning specialists would help also in a coaching aspect with teachers, but also be able to come in and provide those type of lessons as it relates to digital citizenship. And, and they're tiered throughout the grade, so you start, you know, every grade, you have certain standards that you would teach, you know, based upon the, you know, that age group. And so the digital, digital learning specialists would come in and help to implement that curriculum. And as Kathy alluded to earlier, our students are asked to, you know, go online and have the certain typing or technology skills in order to complete the state assessment, starting at the third grade. So that type of instruction needs to start at an earlier age, and we would like to, you know, hire those individuals to come in to not only provide coaching for teachers, but also those lessons as it relates to digital citizenship.
Great, thank you. And then just one quick plug while we have you all here. One of our big concerns last year from the community was about the after-school programming, and I know some of you have worked to create space for that, but we definitely would like to see some innova, some innovative, innovative approaches tried to try to get more capacity. It's really something the community is very interested in. I know that's not a core mission of our schools, but we have these schools that largely are empty after, after hours. I know they're not really empty, but that's what parents see. So to the extent you can try things, things out, try sharing classrooms and other ways to create a little bit higher capacity, that would be great. Thanks.
Okay. If that's all the questions, let me ask one for myself. I'm looking at the co-teaching PD consultant, and I'm wondering, is that, I'm not questioning the need, I'm wondering, can the PD be offered so that it can reach out to people who might be co-teachers the next year?
The district-wide request, it's just reflected at each level, so that would be to have it supporting onsite coaching and development for teachers across the district who are in co-teaching partnerships. We would like to, we know from research, those, those relationships take time to develop, so we would try and keep them consistent, you know, so it wouldn't necessarily be like, oh, you're a co-teacher this year, but next year you're a co-teacher, you're switching. So we would try to keep them consistent to build the capacity in those relationships.
Okay, so it's more of a helping build relationships and getting them working together?
I mean, there's certainly insurrectional strategies that go along with co-teaching. There's, you know, five, without going into it all, but five basic, you know, different approaches. And this would be both the pedagogical and the support around developing that relationship. How are you using your instructional partner in different ways in the classroom and whatnot? So it would be onsite coaching. We have sent people repeatedly to, you know, one-off workshops and whatnot, and what we hear from them is, that was great. I now want to go practice and talk about it with somebody, you know? So that's why we're looking at a coaching model versus just continuing to send people to workshops on it.
Okay. I guess what I was trying to get at is, it seems like this is something that we're opening more and more classes, and I'm just hoping, can we prep the teachers who are going to be next year's teachers? I mean, not just the ones who are doing it now, but getting the people ready.
Yeah, I think as we identify those partnerships, people who are interested in doing that, definitely.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thank you all very much, and we'll look for the updated list and send it out. Thank you. And at this point, we are going to hear from the Arlington Education Association's representative, Ms. Nolan. Thank you for joining us. And she's going to present their FY20 budget needs request for the elementary schools.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share our budget requests for the elementary and preschool levels tonight. Many of our requests tonight are designed at promoting equity amongst all of our schools, and the following are areas where we feel increases are needed. So for the elementary schools, echoing what the principals have shared with you, we ask that the district increase specialists at each elementary school, art, music, physical education, to increase flexibility and schedule. education, to increase flexibility in scheduling, reducing travel time, and again, looking at that common planning piece. I can speak for myself, when I first started here seven years ago at Bishop, I believe at the time, all the classrooms' grade level had common planning time and it was a lot easier as a specialist to schedule services for students. And as that decreased and that, you know, flexibility decreased, scheduling became more and more difficult. We're also requesting an additional 1.0 FTE learning specialist at Stratton and a 1.0 FTE learning specialist at Pierce, so that we then have three learning specialists at each elementary school, with the idea being that they would be K1, 2, 3, 4, or 5. In addition, we need an additional .5 FTE SLC social worker at Brackett and enough staff so there are at least 2.0 FTE social workers per building, not including the SLC programs. Increased student needs have meant an uptick in extreme behaviors and teachers in schools with two social workers report a dramatic improvement in student behavior. This clearly should be replicated through all schools. The Hardy School needs an additional .2 FTE occupational therapist just to meet caseload demands. Across the district, we need an additional 1.0 FTE ELL to create equity of ELL programs at each school and to ensure that students receive services that are closer to state guidelines. This will also help to meet the district's goal of cultural competency. And as always, we need additional grade-level teachers to bring class sizes down due to a growing enrollment and more TA support. We believe there needs to be a TA in all grades one, one and two classes with 22 or more students and a TA in all grades three through five classes with 24 or more students to meet the behavioral, academic, and social-emotional needs of all students. As we raise the expectations and with the increase of students with special needs, students and teachers need a greater support system. Our teachers, and we can talk more about this, I know that there was some question about it, would like to instate a gifted and talented program for elementary students. Our high-level learners deserve a time for specialized instruction. Differentiation is not enough to allow them to thrive and teachers report this as an area of need. There also needs to be an increase of art supplies in all schools. With an increase of students, the budget for art supplies also needs to increase to accommodate them. In support of our special education department, we'd like an additional 3.5 FTE for team chair people. Team chairs who are assigned to only one building will have more direct contact with staff for training purposes and reduced caseloads will lend themselves to the timely completion of all required paperwork, which as we know was a big finding when it came to the recent CPR. Finally, we hope the district will hire more behavioral specialists, BCBA's. Additional BCBA's would ensure that teams are effectively responding to the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of students. As Arlington's population grows, so does the variety of needs that students have when they enter the school setting. And then our requests for monotony are simple, they're relatively straightforward. The preschool needs a full-time building substitute to cover classes when teachers are in meetings, attending PD or out sick, and we're requesting an additional .5 speech-language pathologist to meet the demands of an increasing caseload and workload to meet the needs there. We realize that this list is extensive, but we hope that you understand that each item was very thoughtfully considered and we ask these only in efforts to improve the educational experience of our students.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, I did ask a question. I'm just curious about the whole dialogue about the gifted and talented program. That's a big undertaking to do that sort of thing and requires a lot of...
Many elementary schools right now have what they call a flex block or an intervention-challenge block. It's a time when a lot of students who receive interventions of some kind, whether they're through RTI or special education, may leave the classroom or go with other classroom teachers in order to get interventions. And so one of the things that has been discussed is that classroom teachers don't feel well-equipped to intervene or to support students who require more challenge and that that would be a really nice block of time that's already carved up during the school day to meet the needs of those particular students, that right now we feel like are just, you know, we're not targeting them in a really specific kind of explicit way. So that was the thinking there, is that these are the students that, you know, we don't often talk a whole lot about, but they're a population that could use attention nonetheless.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? No? Okay, thank you very much for sharing your information. So, at this point, we're going to move on to the discussion of value engineering for the new high school. This is a continuation from last week and it's going to continue into next month. So let me pull up my notes. No, I don't, Rob, I don't think we need it. No, it's, it's more, okay. Okay, so what you'll find in your packet and at your place is a draft, and I emphasize the word draft, version of a cost trade-off analysis sheet. It's also in Novus. It's draft for several reasons. There's still a lot of work to be done in terms of the effects of the reduction, the impact of the reductions. There are still some numbers which aren't correct. For example, the, I was told this afternoon that the numbers regarding the, if we change science, two science classrooms to regular education classrooms, the space saved by doing that is not correct, the same if we change a art classroom to a regular education classroom. So it's presented here for two reasons. It is actually the best information that we have available at this point and because of the timeline that we have to follow to achieve the goals of the building committee and the project. So just to review the timeline, the building committee is going to meet on the eighth, our school committee meets on the tenth, the documents go to the cost estimators on the fourteenth, there will be a forum on costs predominantly for the high school on the fourteenth, then the building committee meets on the twenty-second, we meet on the twenty-fourth, the estimates come back on the twenty-eighth. Okay, these are all January, sorry, I didn't say them before. So the estimates, the more tight estimates come back on the twenty-eighth. Then there's reconciliation where they line up and there's two sets of estimates that come back and they have to be reconciled. That happens on the twenty-ninth. On that same day, the building committee meets to do an update and decide if there needs to be a value, value engineering discussion, which is, is the high school over the budget? There is a possible second building committee meeting scheduled for the thirty-first, in case we couldn't make all our decisions on the twenty-ninth. Then the building committee meets on the fifth to approve, to approve the total project budget for MSBA submission. We have to send the numbers in, in advance of the actual report. We then meet on the, the building committee then meets on February 12th to approve the submission of the schematic design report and that'll be, go into the MSBA. So what I'm trying to do is get us to have our discussions and information in a timely fashion that it will then mesh with all of these dates. And you can see they don't line up very well. The bottom line is that we are going to have to provide information in advance of knowing the need for any, if or any cuts. And because there's only two days kind of in between when we're really talking about the numbers, I know we could reschedule, you know, we could schedule a school committee meeting in there. I don't think that's enough time to really be aiming at. So I propose we do the following. I propose we have three different sets of discussions. Tonight, we're going to discuss what our recommendations are, assuming there is no need for cuts, assuming that the building committee does not feel that we need to reduce the square footage to reach the budget. Then on January fourteenth, I propose that Dr. Janger and Dr. Bodie work together to come up with, to create two proposals. One will be for a lower amount, to save a lower amount of money, say three to five million. One will be to save a higher amount of money, to say, say to save six to 10 million. We'll figure out those numbers later. I'll work on that and work with Dr. Bodie and maybe the finance subcommittee and the building committee to figure out the exact numbers to aim at. We will hear what the proposals are from Dr. Janger and Dr. Bodie and we'll have a chance to discuss it. I'm hoping that we will then, I mean, there might be changes, we will then vote to accept it and then this would go forward as the educational recommendations for any value engineering and it would be passed off to the building committee. For what I would like to do tonight, I'd like us to have some discussion about what are our wishes and I divide that into three parts. One is looking at the high school related, high school education-related items. One part is looking at the Arlington Public Schools related and specifically I'm thinking payroll and administrative offices. And the third is thinking about the non-AHS-related items such as the comptroller, the facilities and IT. And I know IT could fit into the other category, but, and at the end of this, I'm going to ask for a motion and I would ask that authorize Mr. Schlickman and myself to write a letter on behalf of the school committee describing the discussion that we have tonight. And we will forward this to the building committee. So that's, so this is really a tool just to look at now, well, as, as it becomes more final, you will be supplied with a later version, but I wanted you to see what kind is, is on the table in terms of proposals. This is created more as a, the document that the construction manager, or the, that Skenska is working with, isn't as detailed in terms of what they mean when they say they're going to do something and this is made to be easier to understand and to follow. Mr. Hainer.
I support every bit of this, but I just have one question. I think it's important for us to give our input in this, but the town offices, I don't feel we have a responsibility or an obligation, and I'm just sharing this with you, that this belongs to the whole town as a thing. All the other parts are educational and I value that and I understand it and I think to be input. These other places, those offices are here because there was no other place to put them at that particular moment.
And I think that would be what we put in the letter, is that we have no opinion about where those go. I mean, we're happy to have them. Right now, the IT, my understanding is that IT, the comptroller and the facilities are all moving to the DPW, the...
I heard comptroller to Town Hall.
Oh, okay, off-site.
Off-site, yeah.
And that's, assuming we have, I'm bringing these up in part because, do you want to talk about payroll for a moment? Because payroll's another department that's being discussed.
Talk about the process first?
Okay, sure.
So I appreciate what you're trying to do, but the other alternative, which is what Belmont did, is to have a joint meeting of the school committee and the building committee. So I think that if a decision is made that we have to do value engineering, we have to cut things out, I think a more productive way to do it would be to have a joint meeting.
I agree.
Okay, I had not heard of that possibility, so we can look at that.
Short timeframe.
Yeah. Okay. I know, I'm not quite sure how you would run that meeting, but, I mean, no, 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 I'm just saying, how do you, anyway, we can talk about it and figure, I'm just not sure how to...
Can we get the chair of the building committee and the chair of the school committee in the same room and hash that out?
They were already together, we'll figure that out.
I know, I'm...
Okay, Mr. Thielman.
So, you know, I, I think the way to look at this is, the, and I think Kersey articulated this, is that, you know, all that's in this, everything that's in the, the building itself is a result of a well-thought-out educational plan that people put a lot of time into. And so every single space is needed to fulfill the educational plan and there's really no fluff in this. So it's important that people understand, there's no fluff, it's not like there's, there's a lot of nice-to-haves. It's must-haves because of the plan, because of the design of the building, 1,755 students. And we have, as a committee, pushed for some larger spaces because we are concerned, we believe the school's going to have a larger enrollment than 1,755 students and we want to be prepared for that. And so this is a discussion, in the event that the building committee says we have to make cuts, it's important that we make cuts that are educationally sound. What has happened in the past in Arlington, when I was on the Thompson School Building Committee, many years ago, we had to value engineer and we looked to the principal and the superintendent to make recommendations and we adopted the recommendations made by the principal and the superintendent for value engineering, reductions in certain things. And that's how we did it. And so this case, Kersey's position is a good one, is that really this should have another step in it, which is not just the principal and the superintendent, but the committee should be involved. And so ideally, the principal and the superintendent would make a recommendation, as Kersey said, and we would talk about it here. I think we could talk about it beforehand, before there's a joint meeting, Len, I think it'd be better if we all talked, we have this conversation here and then we can have a joint meeting. But at the same time, if there's, if there's a vote and recommendations, Kersey can bring that to the building committee.
Okay.
But I want to say, we don't want to do any of this, we don't want to make any reductions. We don't make any reductions. We want the building to be as large as possible because we have a growing enrollment in this district and we want as much flexibility as possible. And if we make reductions in the size of the building, it's going to cost us more money later on, just like it did with the Thompson. Same thing's going to happen, same cost to taxpayers.
Okay, Mr. Hainer.
I think what Mr. Thielman just said is excellent, I appreciate that, but the, all the aspects of the educational part, I think we should, I think that's an active part we should, but the building administration office and the, still the payroll, the town offices are still there, I still think those are not the educational areas. And, I mean, we can, as you said, we can have input in that, but the other part is the educational part and that's what we've been charged for by the town.
Okay, Mr. Schlickman.
Yeah, I, I agree wholeheartedly. I mean, if you take a look at the auditorium, you know, we're at nine, seating of 900, that's what we currently have. We packed the thing. If the student enrollment's going to increase, it's, it's going to be more problematic. The community relies upon that auditorium for a lot of events. If it's adequately sized, it could be a community resource. To come out of this building process with less than what we have is totally unacceptable in my mind. To reduce the current seating of that auditorium would be wrong. Similarly, on the, on the gymnasium and the library space, these are not things where you could just tack on a couple of classrooms. These are critical spaces that have to accommodate the programs of the future, 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now. And if we get it wrong now, it's going to hurt us for 50 years. And we, I, I think we should hold firm on it. Now, when we get to the offices, be it the town offices or the district offices, I think we have a preference of maintaining the district office here in this building. But what we should do is come up with a reality, because there's been some conversation out there that, oh my God, they're going to spend X million dollars on a district office and we could cut that. But if we cut that, there's going to be a cost to put the district office somewhere else. If we cut the town offices that we're going to reconfigure and put space here, there's going to be a cost to put it somewhere else. So it takes it off of this debt exclusion, it takes it off of this project, but we're just moving it to another, another pocket. So that's really not a savings. So if there's a savings, if we had free space that would cost us nothing, where we could put town offices, that'd be one thing. If there was no cost to move us, move central office over to the parmenter, you know, that would be one thing. But there's a cost to that, both in terms of renovation and the loss of revenue for our ability to rent out that space. So on the non-school-related, we need to very clearly state what the cost is here and what the cost is... and what the cost is for other options. So it's not like we could just sort of magically save a few million dollars by not putting the offices here because it's a paper savings, because on some other ledger in some part of the town budget, we're going to have to pay for that space. The other thing I want to say, there's been a lot of conversation about parking and parking lots and field space, and I think that that's certainly an important consideration. I would like the building committee to look at coming up with a deal with the town where we give the parking over to the town, have a town parking authority build a parking garage adjacent to our facility, so that we don't have to pave over large stretches of the site, and that that garage could be a mixed use, and that we could have permitted spaces for our purposes, and the town can charge for, for other spaces to meet the other parking needs of the town, because the central business district is short on parking spaces, and employees who work for the town and work this side of Pleasant Street need a place to park as well. So if we come up with some sort of a hybrid model where the town builds a parking garage out in the back that, that can be used by both us and the community, similar to what we do in Lowell across the street from the high school, this would, this might be a solution that gets us more open space and reduces the, the cost to us for providing parking, gives us a better facility, and provides a revenue stream to the town to offset the cost of doing that part of the building.
Okay. Ms. Morgan.
I just had a question about the, the dollar amount on the, on the monotony preschool. For some reason, I thought that the number that we had been circling around for that was like around 20 million, so now I'm just, I'm just wondering about, so if we can, is, are they somehow reconciling? I mean, obviously, if we don't, I, I fully support having it here, whether it costs 20 million or 10.5 million. 10.5 million would be awesome, but I, that's what I'm just, like, they're saying basically this potential savings is 10 and a half to 11 and a half.
Is that net?
But...
No, they're all based on gross square footage. That's...
So I guess I'm just wondering what the discrepancy was, because I feel like in the past...
Yeah, that's, I will find out. Let me, where's my pen?
But the, Kersey, that, that's not a, that's not a net number if we were to renovate another building, right? That's...
No, no, this is just, so what she's saying is that the numbers that's been, that have been kicked around are very different than what the number is here, so I will, I will find out what the answer is.
So on January whatever, 8th, we're supposed to have a report on the potential cost of renovating the Parmenter at our meeting.
Great. But I guess what I'm saying is even without, like, this, this chart has nothing to do with...
Yeah, yeah, I understand. It's, yeah, 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 okay. Mr. Hainer.
Does that report, Mr. Thielman, include alternative spaces for administration, or are they just looking at Parmenter as, as the alternative space?
It's payroll and administration.
Both.
District administration and, and monotony preschool.
But, I mean, are they looking just at Parmenter, or are they looking at other alternatives besides Parmenter?
Just Parmenter.
Just Parmenter.
Just Parmenter, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Seuss.
Two things. One, something that Mr. Thielman has mentioned at meetings, which is that we retain the administration in the school, and we ever needed space in the future, that, that would be a great place, we could potentially move it offsite, even though we want it here, that would be potentially available to us. The second thing, which I think has not been brought to the conversation, or maybe it has in a building meeting, is the potential value of renting out some of these spaces. We're going to have a lot nicer of a building, potentially charge more money. We have this gorgeous theater, we have two theaters, we have the gym spaces, and I, if that money's significant, and maybe it's not, it'd be great to bring that into the conversation, so that when we go to the voters, we can say, one of the things that might offset the cost of this building is that we can rent it out spaces.
My understanding is we can't...
We can't.
We can't discuss that, that, that can't be a...
So we don't want to say to the state, we're...
Oh, yeah, 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 I get that.
In the future, there is, I mean, even now, Arlington High School's athletic fields were leased to, or rent to Leslie University.
Right.
So that one, that...
And I, I know for theater spaces, there's a real dearth, and so a need to rent spaces.
The district has done very well in trying to utilize its facilities to, as much as possible, and I think that will continue, but that's not something, yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks, okay.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is unanimity in wanting to maintain the educational program as it was written, and the spaces that are needed for that, that people aren't concerned about the non-APS, non-educational, the, the comp controller, the, the facilities and IT moving offsite.
And the administration and payroll.
Well, that's, I'm not hearing unanimity in that. I'm hearing some people say that they want administration, and this is why I chunked it this way. I'm hearing some people say that they feel it's important to maintain administration in the building for growing, to allow for growing enrollment, and I've also heard that just for the efficiencies in having the staffs close together because of the daily dealings.
Good, just for clarification, when we say enrollment, the idea that those, that those offices would move offsite at some future date to offset increased enrollment?
Yes.
Just flexibility.
So it's 9,000 square feet?
I know, I just, I'm just making sure I understood.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's, it's...
I'm making a judgment.
Right.
So it's nine, let me just clarify if I could, it's 9,000 square feet or 80, whatever it is, 9,000, 8,500 square feet, and it would need to be configured in such a way so that they could be, those spaces could be converted to classrooms in the event that the enrollment reached, what some people fear it might reach with this 2,000 students.
I'll respond. I think, in my mind, it's a con because you don't, you're not covering all the different classes, science, the STEM, the arts, the music, and stuff like that. You can't plan for that ahead because it's going to be located in one area. It's a space thing. It's fine. I just want to make sure it's clear.
If it were to occur X number of years from now, there would be a cost of the district administration of space exactly, and there would be a cost to reconfigure.
I, I understand that, which might require it. The, a lot of school districts in, in updating do not have their administration, and payroll, we're, we're, I don't want to debate this now, this isn't the place to debate this now.
Well, but this is...
Well, if you want, the payroll is, is, is half school and it is town. The school makes up the biggest part of the payroll and stuff like that. And the administration offices, whether they're located, at one time, they were located in the front corner in a house over there, there was a house here for sale right here for close proximity, the town could have picked up, they looked at it for about 10 minutes. People have to believe that every possible thing was looked at to go with it. I think we can convince people the value of all the educational, the, the gym, the art, the, the science rooms, the need for those. I think very few people, once you talk to them, question that additional space. They're very accepted with that. These other spaces, they haven't been convinced yet.
Well, don't forget, we may come, there may be evidence presented on January 8th that the cost of renovating Parmenter is more than this.
And it may be cheaper, too.
It may be.
Okay.
We have to keep open mind both ways.
Okay. Dr. Bodie, can you please speak to payroll?
I certainly can. Mr. Hainer is correct. Payroll, just like IT, facilities, they're all town school departments. What is unique about payroll relates to basically the kind of turn that we have, the, the number of staff that we have that are going on maternity leave, they're, you know, being paid through grants. There's a lot of activity that goes on a daily basis between even the human resource department and the business department, daily, multiple times. So even if it is determined later that district offices go to another site, my strong recommendation will be that payroll also is part of district offices, because it would just decrease the efficiency that we, we have. And I suspect that it might actually end up having to increase personnel just because that, that facility of ease of communication would be diminished considerably.
I would support that 100%. I, I look at Lexington, they went from a very crowded house that was a mess, they were fortunate, they had a, they retooled the school, and, and put everything in there, including a lot of the professional development and, and the rules and stuff like that. I agree with Dr. Bodie in that, those two have to stay together, just for the reason she stated.
Right. That's, that's, okay. So I'm...
Is there, sorry, can I, there's no way that we can justify having payroll be part of Arlington Public School-related offices? I mean, the way that you, I mean, word semantics, but...
We, that's what I think we will put in, I, we will try and capture what Dr. Bodie has expressed in our letter, that we feel it is important that payroll stay with the administration. And then what is the feeling about, among the committee, for the administration to stay in the high school or not?
So, I mean, if you're, again, if we're writing a letter and not having a conversation, I mean, it's clearly not unanimous, unanimous support on that, not unanimous support on either the payroll or, or administration staying in the building. So, how, you can, you can take a vote and say it's majority support, that's fine, but, you know, I, I think it's more of a cost decision. I think it, it, it would be nice to have the expansion space, but again, it's more of a cost decision that's not really an educational requirement for either of those. I mean, I work, I work in a, in an organization that offices, you know, all around the globe, and, you know, it's, it's a virtual organization, we all have meetings online, you know, there's video conferencing now, you don't have to walk, it's, it's nice to be able to walk down, down the hall and talk to someone, but it's totally not required.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's premature to make a judgment until we have more data, which is the cost of renovating Parmenter.
Okay.
But it's not, I mean, it's not our, it's not our role to do that cost-benefit analysis.
Well, okay, but if it comes back that it's more expensive to renovate the Parmenter, or would you be in favor of keeping the district offices here?
Whatever the, the building committee feels is appropriate. If they feel that it is better to separate those two projects, even though it costs more because of simplicity or some other reason, then that's the building committee decision to make. It's not an educational need.
Okay. But it wouldn't be our decision to have a second, we'd have to have a second debt exclusion for that, we'd, we'd have to kind of ask Selectman to do that for us. So we don't kind of have total authority there.
Well, I mean, they need to find a home for us. They need to either lease private space, or they need to find, build a building for us. I mean, you could put it on RFP for private space, private office space, there's lots of districts that rent private office space.
Exactly. Okay.
So I personally would disagree that it is not an educationally-related question. I feel that there are efficiencies in having the administration in the building with the high school. And I think there's also just kind of nice offshoots, just having the administration around our biggest, most expensive, most populated school on a daily basis is helpful and helpful for understanding what's going on. So I think there is a loss if we choose to move the, I mean, an educational loss, it may not be very measurable, but I think there is a loss on the education side if we choose to move the district offices off. But we can, I still think the letter is, I mean, it's either we have a letter or we go, I, I think a letter is better to communicate to the building committee at the next, at the next building committee meeting. And, uh, let me think about how we would handle the administration.
So just, so we're the building committee, the only thing the building committee is considering for the district offices are two choices right now, that's it. It's either part of the high school project, or it's at the Parmenter School. And... I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part. Or at the Parmenter School. Those are the two things we're looking at. So when we have that data, we'll react to it. The committee will react. But I think what Kersey's saying, I, I agree with what Kersey's saying, just so everyone knows, educationally, I think it's the smartest thing to keep the, them together. So I support what Kersey's saying, but the building committee, as many people on it with different opinions, and so we have to listen to them all.
Okay.
Has the building committee looked at any data about how many districts have their district offices as part of their high school, and how many don't?
No, but I suspect it's all over the place.
It is.
It's all over the place.
I, okay. Mr. Hainer.
Your, your statement about the proximity of the building, one of the issues that we've had all along with administrative offices in this building, and the other offices which are being dealt with, is security. We have a lot of people coming into this building that are just on the peripheral of school-related people, and they come all the way to the sixth floor, and the security is a lot better than it was seven years ago, but it's still loose. As I came in tonight, there was a gentleman asking me how to get out of the building. He got into the building, and he got lost, and he got, I literally had to walk him out because it was easier to walk him out, to show him where it is. I don't mean to make light of it, but by being in Parmenter, there'd be some degree of security, but nowhere near as much. That's a minor thing. I'm just adding the pluses and minuses.
Just, just to respond to that, the new building will have security built into it for administration there, it's being put off to a side, it'll have its own separate entrance that'll be used, so I, I don't, I think either way...
So the preschool and the, and the district administration are in a separate building on the steam wing, the back of the steam?
The humanities wing.
The humanities wing, yeah. So...
With dedicated parking for school committee members.
No, no, we cut that out.
See, I figure right there, that's it.
No parking for school committee members ever again.
Yeah.
Sorry. It was unanimous vote.
There, Jeff, you can say you saved money right there.
When you talk about, and I just want to be able to distinguish, when you talk about district offices, are you talking about central administration only because we have directors of curriculum? So I just want to make sure.
Yeah, central.
Yeah, we're talking this floor.
Oh, just this floor, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, please. To, to answer Ms. Morgan's question, it does vary, and some of it's historic. I mean, we could have been sitting out in the front lawn, but they took, they tore that building down, or it was a central school at one time. Currently, there are a number of districts that have central office in the high school. In some districts, it might even be in an elementary or in a middle school. I've seen in a middle school as well. Same thing with preschool. We have a number of districts, Burlington, Reading, Medford, all have their preschool in the high school. Part of that is because of the link between the educational program. But sometimes these things evolve for lots of other reasons in districts of, you know, of cost, convenience, where they are, there's just so many factors that, that direct that, but it can be. I think it's best to have district offices in a school, I'm not saying it has to be the high school, middle school, or the elementary. We have no space in any of our K8 at all. In fact, we're quite a, we're getting quite to capacity, but, because you having it separate is not ideal, I, I don't think it is. But there are cost considerations, and that's why we're going through this exercise, just to look at the options and to see what makes sense. There's another piece, too, which we have to explore with respect to the preschool and the district offices. Some people might think, well, we can eliminate one and not the other, but they're linked in the design in one building. So what are the cost efficiencies? Are there any? I mean, there's obviously some, but there may not be as much as you would think if you moved one without the other. So there's, there's a, a lot to consider, and, but I think this is important that the school committee, you know, weigh in on all of this as we go forward.
So, um, does anyone else have anything else they want to say? Just, Ms., Dr. Seuss.
I'm just curious about the process. So there's a chance that we will have to make reductions, just because the financial numbers get it, get too crazy, right? We don't want to make any reductions, right? So, so who then makes that decision? Or do we, can, do we have an input, if, if it's like, we really have to make reductions, we just have to make these hard choices, will we have a chance to give that input at that point? Or we don't have time for it?
Yeah, so, okay, so if all of this work comes back, and it's more than 308 million, we have to make reductions.
Right.
Because that's the number we gave to the MSBA, and that's it. Can't, can't go above that. Just that, we have no choice.
Right.
We also have a building committee of, you know, 18 members of all sorts of different opinions, and so if the, a, a motion is made at the building committee to say the building cannot exceed, the cost cannot exceed X amount of dollars.
Right, okay.
Okay, let's just say that's what they say. Everybody, and there's a majority vote for that, well, that's the limit. Then we would have to make, we may have to make some reductions. And so ultimately... And so ultimately, the ultimate authority to make those reductions and set the size of the building is the Building Committee. The Building Committee wants input from the school in the past, from the school leadership. In the past, in other, in elementary school projects in the town, when there had to be value engineering, it was primarily the superintendent and the principal making the recommendations. Kersey has pointed out rightly so that this should happen with school committee buy-in, and ideally, the superintendent, the principal, the district, the district leadership and the school committee are aligned with one set of recommendations. And so we're trying to get to that point. That's what we're trying to get to, where it's, everyone's aligned, we all come in agreement, and the school committee, superintendent, principal, all say, this is what we suggest you do.
Okay. So, and also, we're just talking about the stuff going on now, right? So in a few years, when we start, our next, you know, when we start really getting the details, the proposal, we might need, because these are just based on square footage, right? There might be choices that we have to make, right? About buildings, about space, about so forth, right? So there's still...
There's still choices all along the way, and even though you picked this design, and next, if the voters approve it in June...
Yep.
In 20, 1920, that school year before we start actually construction, there's still lots of design work that goes on. And there's little things, little choices that are made, like, you know, should the band room be 3,000 square feet, or, I mean, you know, those sort of little things happen that...
Okay, so, so...
Part of the design process, they keep going, they don't stop.
I mean, great, great, thanks, thanks very much.
Well, can I add a comment? Once we go through this process and we have an agreement with MSBA for a budget number, that's our budget.
Right, I know, we can't go above it, yeah.
And so if site work or whatever, we have some surprises along the way, we have to make some decisions. When we did this at Thompson, absolutely correct that we had to make decisions all along the way. The one thing that I will say is that we never scrimped on infrastructure. We make other choices that were less important, you know, you know, this kind of handlebar, you know, this kind of fixture versus another kind of fixture. Those, literally, as you go through the whole process, you are constantly making decisions. We'll probably have to have a subcommittee, the Building Committee, have certain areas of which they will work on it, because you can't have a committee that big going through that level of detail when you have to make decisions like that. So it's still quite a process, but the one thing people need to know is that once we have that budget number, that is the budget number. Some people say, well, I know it will just increase.
Right, it won't.
It will not just increase. That's it. We have to work with that number. That's why all this work that we're doing now is so important.
Okay.
I mean, I think the Building Committee's desire, this is back of the district office question, is to have, we would just like to have one debt exclusion in June. If we have to put the district offices or do something to Parmenter, there could be two debt exclusion questions, and I'm not sure that's what the, I mean, Building Committee, I can't speak to everybody in the Building Committee, but right now, they don't want to do that. That doesn't seem like what they want to. They want one debt exclusion question, period.
Okay.
But that's, we haven't taken, but that's kind of the feel of the committee, we haven't never taken a vote on that, just, I don't want anyone to think we've taken, we haven't taken a vote on it, but that, say that's what they want.
Got it.
Say that's what they want.
Okay. So I can certainly work with Mr. Thielman to work out if we can do a joint meeting and when and how to handle that, but I still feel it would be helpful to have a letter written on our behalf that gets to the Building Committee at their meeting on the 8th or in advance. Mr. Schlickman, do you feel like you have enough sense of how people feel that you can, we can work together to write that? Okay. So could I have a motion to authorize Mr. Schlickman and myself to write a letter on behalf of our committee describing our thoughts in the event that the Building Committee feels that no cuts are necessary?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion of the motion?
Do we get to see the letter before you send it or not so much?
We...
Seems like a fair question.
It's a fair question.
It's a fair question, but we run into an open meeting law problem if you deliberate on the contents of the letter.
Oh, no, there's a difference. Okay. We can supply you with what is sent before we send it or as we send it. What we can't have is comments to change anything back. Mr. Hayner?
I think if it was anything substantive, which I'm not expecting, we could request it to be held until we have a meeting or something like that. I don't anticipate it, but I mean, just to lie anybody's concerns.
Okay. Yeah, that would, that would, I think that would be reasonable.
I've never understood the open meeting law that way, so somebody could comment back to Karen who collects them or something, just they're not shared as a, you know, right? You can comment, you can send, hey, Karen, here's my comment.
Karen's not a member of the committee.
Yeah, but you can, but you can clarify something that was said.
Yeah, but someone can collect the comments, give it to you, but you can't, that's not a discussion, that's not the same thing as a discussion.
But you're deliberating because...
Why?
Because Mr. Schlickman and I are writing down our opinion, and then you are commenting and having us change our opinion.
Right.
And all of this is outside of an open meeting.
The only way out of it is if it were Kathy writing the letter.
Ms. Starks and I have gotten that a couple of times.
Yeah.
All right, all right, we could, I mean, we could send you the comments, but we couldn't, you couldn't make the changes until we had a meeting or something.
Right, right.
We could do that. Okay, so sending the comments is not a problem, but you could say, there's enough comments here that we have to have a meeting to discuss them. Could be the...
Okay. The, I think it's easier if we just have people, if they have strong concerns, that they ask that the letter be held. And that, that's, those are the two things, and that way we don't have any violations of open meeting.
There'd be a delay until sending it to the...
Delay until our next meeting, but that means it'll delay getting to the Building Committee, so, but...
There is a consensus on the educational parts. There is not full agreement on the administrative offices and the payroll. That's my take from what we've done.
Yeah, the letter is going to represent that, I think.
Yeah, and there's no judgment on the other one. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's, I think, between the two of us, and we can watch everyone on TV if we really, can't remember what it said.
I hope you don't do that.
Sit in the back of the car.
They said we're on high definition now.
Are we, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
I think somebody managed to do this intention and just keep me away, because it's the same night I have a permanent town building committee.
Okay. So is there any further discussion about this letter?
We have two wonderful people at this, three wonderful people at this table who are on the Building Committee, so I'm sure that with the letter, we can have our views transmitted clearly and articulately.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hayner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So that was unanimous.
I just signed my soul away.
Yep. Okay. Moving on, Superintendent's Report.
I have very little tonight. What I would like to do, first of all, is just compliment the Performing Arts Department and our music teachers of two extraordinary concerts. Last Friday night was an amazing concert at the high school, as there was on Tuesday. Unfortunately, it conflicted with the building meeting, but Mr. Thielman went to it.
I blew off the building meeting for my son's concert.
Of course, it's important to do.
I came late, I came in the meeting late, but I was there.
But one of the things that I know is true, and I, any music teacher would tell you is that you mentioned about the instrumental music. It's that early, it's that early lessons and playing together that really makes the kind of quality. I have to say that I have heard the Dvorak's New World Symphony many times, but I have to say this was amazing, what they, how they performed on Friday night. So all around, it was terrific, great chorus, great music. So that's something for, I just should be very proud of. And one thing that I found very interesting Friday night is that people behind me were seniors in the, in the community who were coming just to come, which was wonderful. Yeah. And interestingly, I overheard some of the conversation, that stage is too small.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is, Dr. Bodie.
They were just...
Too small.
Just barely could get on the stage.
I don't have seats too small, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I said, well, maybe we'll change that soon. The other is that tomorrow, we are dismissing at 12 for the winter break, and I think everyone is looking forward to it quite a bit. A lot of, been a lot of illnesses in the school, so there'll be a chance to just open the windows and get some things cleared out. But I do want to wish all of our families in our community very happy holidays and a wonderful new year, and we will be returning in about a good 10 days.
Something small. Can I say something small? I've had a couple of community members say that they're frustrated that they can't find the information about performing arts. It's very easy to find when sports events are happening in schools, but the calendar sort of hides the performing arts.
Let me look into that.
And if you don't have a kid in the school system, it's just hard to find, so, yeah.
Yes, it should be right on the front page. Let me double check that.
There's like a nice thing for, you know, for sports, but there's just not a tab, you know, not like an easy place to get to.
Okay, thank you. So, moving on, consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are to be considered, are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered as normal sequence. Approval of warrant, warrant number 19113 dated 12/13/2018. Total amount of warrant, $631,825.34.
I'd like to hold it for Mr. Hayner's benefit. You're on the warrant.
I was on the last warrant.
No, you were not on the last warrant. We signed it last week, now we're voting.
The one we're voting on.
So this is the one you have to abstain on.
Okay. So we have, there is nothing else in...
That's bad boy, Bill, writes.
Then I need a motion to approve warrant number...
So moved.
19, okay, the same one I just read. Can I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
And one abstention.
Thank you, Mr. Schlickman.
Thank you, Mr. Hayner.
That is passed. Okay, Subcommittee Liaison Reports.
Budget. So we had a joint budget and CIA meeting on Friday. We went over each of the items in the proposed long-range plan, had a lot of good feedback. John and Liz took some notes about things to look into and revise. Our plan going forward is, I'm creating a PowerPoint presentation that hopefully each of us will be willing to present to the PTOs that we're liaisons to, hopefully in February. We are meeting again as a joint Subcommittee in middle of January, late Jan, third week of January, to go over that draft PowerPoint.
You want to give us a training session?
Yes.
What we can say and what we can't say.
January 17th, 5:30 PM.
January 17th, yeah.
5:30 PM.
Okay.
That hasn't posted yet, though.
I don't think it has, no.
Okay.
Community Relations?
Nothing, except that I don't know who has the sign.
I have the sign.
Okay, so...
There's no January one, though.
There is, there's no January one, that is right. Okay, so we, we'll meet again before then.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Curriculum?
Lynn gave the report.
Facilities?
Nothing at this time.
Policy?
No report.
Legal Services Review?
It is my intent to meet with Mr. Thielman sometime in January to present a report to the committee by the second meeting in January, as we were directed to do.
Me and Mr. Carden, what am I...
Mr. Carden told me it was you.
Yeah.
Switched.
Oh, you did?
We did.
We did, yes.
I can do it alone, I'll be having...
I'll fix it.
Yeah, set it up, okay.
I'm just, I'll send you a...
Please do, okay, all right.
Okay. Building Committee?
Well, I have a lot to say. No, I'm, happy holidays, and the next committee meeting is on the 8th, and then there's a forum on January 14th. Snow date is January 16th, the 14th, at Town Hall at 7:00 PM, and then the tours are...
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
Yes.
Tours, the 9th, right?
The 9th, okay. So we're going to have tours of the high school. The last one was just, it was open to anybody, but it was mostly, it was only town meeting members, but this one is on January 9th, starting at 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
Yes.
Yeah, so January 9th, 7:00 PM, tours of the high school. You're going to wind through the building, see the whole thing, and then the architects are going to be in Old Hall answering questions. This is a good chance for people to get familiar with the school, get familiar with what the challenges are here and now, and why we want to build a new school, so we encourage everybody in the community who is interested to come on the 9th. 8th for the meeting, 6:00 PM here in this room, 9th for the tours, 14th for the public forum, if it snows, the 16th for the forum.
Can't we put the architects in the pit? I mean, the old hall is kind of nice.
Gibbs Committee?
May I just add to the hardy on construction? They've just about completed all the aspects of it, it's on time, on schedule, on budget, and they're pouring the sidewalks today and tomorrow, and God's been wonderful, providing 60-degree temperature to pour the concrete, so it's going really well.
Awesome. Okay, Liaison Reports, announcements, and future agenda items. Okay.